So today is Thursday, September 5th, and this is the planning board meeting. And this is just a workshop today, no reviews of any site plans or anything. And I see Rosie maybe coming in. And there's Rosie. All right. No, you can sit there, Rosie. And I'm gonna hand you some.
You chose the best one, didn't you?
Absolutely.
That's me right here. We all know that. You can, since you wanted to hand that up, give that up to Rosie, you can.
That's the latest version.
That's the latest version with changes that were approved by voters in June.
Just take the old one out and replace it with this.
Jeremy's signing them after the autograph.
Mark's gotta tran- put his notes from his current one into his new one, so may take some time. All right, so thank you. There's no formal site plans, like I said, today, or any reviews. And Rosie, I don't know if you want me to just handle this, since it's a workshop, or?
Go for it.
Okay. Are there any comments from the public out there on non-agenda items? Nope. Okay. So last time we met, we talked about some proposed zoning changes, or looking at priorities, and I'm working on those. I'm gonna be meeting with the select board likely October 8th to try to get their priorities, and then we'll move forward based on what you guys had as priorities and what the select board have. And then I'll move forward on trying to draft some zoning ordinance amendments and changes. What I will say, one that I have proposed that I haven't talked to you about yet, and I sent it out to you yesterday, and you have a copy of it in here, are proposed changes to Section 8, which is the site plan. Right now, it's called the Site Plan Review Section 8. I don't quite understand that. But this section currently, what it tries to do is it tries to provide for minor field adjustments and amendments, and how those, how that process should play out. It's very unclear. We don't define what amendments are. We don't define what minor field adjustments are. And I wanted to provide a little clarity and a better process for that. So what I did was, I again proposed some new language. I'm titling it Site, Section 8 Site Plan Compliance: Adjustments, Amendments, and Revisions to Approved Site Plans. The first section, we don't have anything in the zoning ordinance right now that says that your site, once you get site plan approval and you build it, that your site needs to be maintained per that approval. I think it is, everyone should assume that that's the case, but there's nothing in our zoning ordinance that says that that's the case. So what, yes, sir.
Under Section 8, which article are we on?
Uh, I believe, I'm sorry, I think it's Article 10. I believe, but let me see. It's not. It's Article 12. Sorry, I should've had that on there, but it's Article 12. And so what I proposed is, is a piece that says, A on this says, "All projects that receive site plan approval under Article 12, Section 1, and Section 8, B through D, must be constructed and shall be maintained in accordance with the latest dated approved plans and supporting, and supporting approved submittal materials." It seems logical. It's straightforward. It's easy to read, and I think everyone can understand what that is trying to mean. Any thoughts or comments about that piece of this? You like it?
Yeah.
Good?
That's what it means, what it tries to mean.
Right. Thank you. And then, the next B, I was gonna leave that, and that does allow the code officer to approve minor, allow, approve and allow minor field adjustments to an approved site plan if the code officer is satisfied, satisfied that such changes have no adverse effect upon approval criteria or conditions of approval. That's currently what's in there. And I didn't define minor field adjustments yet, but I think that is, I can work on defining that, but generally, you know, if a water line is shown on a plan, and then they get working on the project, and then the water line actually needs to move because they ran into ledge, or they ran into something else, you know, it allows the code officer to say, yeah, you can relocate that water line, or you can relocate power lines and things like that. That's generally what minor field adjustments are and are assumed to be. I can try to come up with a definition for that. I haven't done that yet. But that piece wasn't changing. And in talking to the code officer, that section has worked fine for the years he was here prior. He just wanted, he also wants some clarity in this, too. The next, Section C, is, says, "Minor revisions to approved development plans may be approved by the code enforcement officer subject to the following conditions." And this is really allowing minor changes to a plan different than field adjustments. So the way this reads, if you've read it, you gotta submit six copies, along with applicable fees that the select board will determine. Then the code officer, planning and development director, planning board chair, director of public works, and the fire chief shall agree that the proposed change is a minor revision, and that the proposed change does not violate provisions of the zoning ordinance or materially change a plan approved by the planning board. If any of the persons listed in subsection 2 above requests it, the proposed planned revision will be placed on, on the agenda of the next planning board meeting for the planning board's review. And then this is really kinda what I tried to define a minor revision as. Number 4, "Minor revisions to approved site plans may be approved by the code enforcement officer, provided that such minor revisions will not materially alter the layout or scale of the development, nor its impact on surroundings, nor will it specifically, one, expand the size of a project by increasing the gross floor area of a primary use structure, or by adding a primary use structure, or an accessory use structure containing more than 200 square feet of gross floor area to the site." So if a site plan got approved, and then someone down the road wants to add a little entryway to that site development plan, or an accessory building, like a shed to the rear of a site, we would say, that's a minor revision. It's under 200 square feet. Submit us the six plans. Planning board chair, code officer, everyone looks at it, staff looked at it, make sure it doesn't violate any provision of the ordinance, and then the code officer can approve that as a minor revision to an approved site plan.
Is the gross floor area relative, like, a footprint? Because?
It is footprint. If you look at the definition of gross floor area, I looked at that, Richard, and it's generally the outside.
So the 200 square feet, you know, can all be, can be on one floor, or, what confused me is, if it contain, contain more than 200 square feet, and you had like a three-floor pertinence, it would?
I hear what you're saying, and I would, if there, that would, in my mind, and I can try to make sure we're, we're clear on it, that if they're doing a three-floor of that, that would be 600 square feet and not 200 square feet. But I can, I can double check and make sure how we, how that. So the definition of gross floor area, just to clarify, floor area within the inside perimeter of the exterior walls of the building under consideration, exclusive events, floor area of a building, or portion thereof not provided with surrounding exterior walls to be usable, gross floor area shall not include shafts. Okay, so, yeah, I mean, that would be 600 under that, that definition.
Yeah. It's covered.
And it does define it as 200 square feet of gross floor area to the site.
Yep.
Right.
So. Yep, to the site.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mark.
On the record, couldn't that be just like, reduced to, just, just, call it 200 square foot footprint?
Okay.
You know, instead of, instead of breaking it up, say, primary use or accessory use?
All right, fair. You wanna just simplify it a little bit?
Yeah, just to simplify it of increased.
No more than 200 square feet footprint?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
Are we talking about two different things here, a separate structure versus adding to an existing footprint? Or are you talking that you can add 200 square feet to an existing footprint?
You can add 200 square feet to an, an existing footprint, or brand new. So if someone down the road, if there's an approved site plan already on a site, and someone a year from now wants to come in and add, again, a small shed, or an entryway that's under 200 square feet, staff could review that as a minor revision, along with the planning board chair, and approve it, as long as it doesn't violate any ordinance provisions, or materially alter the site. And then number 2 there, violate the provisions of any town ordinance. Number 3, delete any required landscaping or screening elements, change the number of vehicular access points to the public street system, or significantly alter the location of such access drives, and significantly alter onsite vehicular circulation. So that's really trying to just really focus this on minor changes, and you can't significantly change your site.
Would there ever be a case where you would need to add landscaping or screening elements? This says you can't delete any, but there might be a case on how something's positioned that it would be desirable, or recommended to add landscaping?
Fair.
Or would that be handled by the review of those people?
That would be handled by the review.
Okay.
Correct. Because that would violate, if it was required, and it didn't show on the plan, it would violate the ordinance, zoning ordinance, and we would review, review that and make sure it didn't before we approved that.
And then just one other detail, under number 2, the third line, you have violate written twice.
I know I did. I don't anymore.
You clean it up.
I did. Thank you. Matt Siegel. He is.
On a high note.
Violate. Violate, being violated.
And did you want, in Section 4, Jeremy, did you wanna, I'm sorry, in C4, minor revisions to approved site plans may be modified, or may be approved?
I like approved. Because the way I see this, I go back up to A, way up front, where it says, "All projects that receive site plan approval must be constructed and shall be maintained in accordance with the latest dated approved plans." So it's about approval and not a modification, so that, again, that minor revision plan, and we'll stamp that as a minor revision, approved minor revision, then that becomes the latest dated plan. So then they gotta stay consistent with that one eventually, you know what I mean? Make sense?
I think it's correct terminology.
Yeah. And then, that D is, is just renumbered, but that's the same current language in the zone, in Section 8. And then I did add a 1 and 2 there, for the purposes of this section, amendment to an approved site plan is one that is not a field adjustment, is allowed in subsection B above, or minor revision, as detailed in subsection C4 above, and one that does not require site plan approval under Article 10, Section 1 through 9.
Article 12.
Article 12, yes, sorry. And then for amendments to an approved site plan, the applicant must submit nine copies of the proposed plan and supporting documentation, along with applicable fees, as may be determined by the select board.
Another annual return of question.
Okay.
Why nine copies for this, and six copies for the former?
Correct.
What was that?
The one is, nine is for planning board review, and that matches what's currently required for planning board to receive site plan review approval. And the other six is?
My question's been answered by various, various rationale.
And that's all I have. I mean, for me, this is really a cleanup of our zoning ordinance, and not a, this is really not a new thing. I mean, I guess it is, but processing minor revisions, we get questions often about, is something a modification, is something a field adjustment? And there's nothing in the ordinance currently in Section 8 that defines any of that until it gives the code officer any direction. And this is a lot clearer, and gives a lot more direction, and it requires someone to maintain their site. Go ahead.
If, if we're redoing all this, can we clean up the language in D?
Okay.
Which the old language would have been B.
Go ahead, try to explain this a little better.
Yeah, well, that's all I have.
What bits specifically did you?
If, if the planning board is satisfied by the above criteria, that the matter may be heard as an amendment, the planning board may allow an amendment. If it is satisfied, the amendment meets the site plan approval criteria. There's a whole lot of amendments there.
Yes, all right, I'll look at that section.
Yeah.
Yes, I understand. Yeah.
And it, when you're actually using the ordinances, it makes such a difference, when you're actually kinda trying to figure out, as a working professional, what it actually means, and what you can and can't do, having them, I mean, that's taking the time to have them clearly written, makes such a difference, when you're actually in the middle of it, in the weeds.
You are not kidding, as a professional that reads the zoning ordinance every day, I scratch my head on a lot of sections.
Yeah, yeah.
And I just had this conversation, I was meeting with Garland Dorsey on something, and I had the same, something came up, and I sat up scratching my head, what, what does it mean?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, there's so many.
So going up for Mark on D?
Yeah.
Do you wanna go through that tonight, or do you wanna just take it aside and put it in subject for objection?
I'd prefer to take it aside and just handle it. I mean, the select board hasn't heard this at all, and I, I mean, I assume they're gonna be fine with these, with this change, but I'd rather just, this is really try to get it out there, and get your initial thoughts, and it sounds like I've got. Mark's staring at me. That's what I said, does he know he's over there? I know. Can you please push your button?
It looks like you can just take the second sentence of it right out, and just massage the first sentence.
In Section D there? Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
I, I think it's, I think you're on the right track. I mean, I think what we do need to do is, is address minor revisions on the subdivisions, and it makes more sense.
So just for clarification, from, in my mind, this was really about site plan review and not subdivision yet?
Or, that's what I meant, site plan review, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. They're two, two different things, so.
Yeah.
Everyone, for the most part, good with that kind, that kinda language? Great.
Thank you for your work on that.
That's good. Yes. 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 Thank you. Cause that's staying, that didn't change, so I just didn't change that one, but thank you, Mark.
You guys didn't catch that? Mark got it, that's what I'm saying. We always things for some people to check to see what.
It's a full time save.
It takes a village.
And I don't have any handout or anything written for the, the next item, Article 8, District Regulations, Accessory Structures. We talked about this, though. It's really fascinating. You go through our zoning ordinance, and accessory uses are allowed, but accessory structures are not, appear, appear to be permitted in any of the zones, really. So a shed, a detached garage, those are accessory structures, and everyone has them everywhere. And technically, if you read the zoning ordinance, the way I read it, they're not allowed. So, I wanna clear that up and allow.
You're coming for the cat among the pigeons, haven't you?
And allow people to have, legally allow people to have detached garages, and sheds, and those kinds of things on their property. So you'll see a change for those, just adding that accessory structure into a lot of places.
So what you, so we're looking at this Article 3 definitions?
That's something separate.
So what are we looking, supposed to be looking at here?
Nothing.
Or you don't have anything?
Don't have anything. I'm just letting you know that that's, yeah, that's just gonna come down the pike, and there's not gonna be much, you'll get a small little memo, and it'll just tell you what, where we're adding accessory structures into each zone. Okay.
And is there a grandfather clause in that, as you rewrite it, saying, okay?
Every accessory structure that's out there.
But that's the strange thing, is, you know, if you have 90% of these properties, including mine, that have accessory structures.
I think we could probably do something in the, the purpose or the intent on why we're doing it, to just clean that up.
For future development.
I mean, cause once the ordinance gets cleaned up, so it's clear that they're allowed, then everybody's in compliance.
Correct.
Right? The only reason we're not in compliance is because the ordinance isn't written the way we need it to be.
Right.
To make us in compliance, it's so easy.
Said, if your structure is, if your structure was permitted and placed in violation of a setback, it's not grandfathered. Right.
Then piers, wharves.
Things that are only grandfathered are things that were legally established. So if you blew a setback, and you put a shed in, or a garage in, it's not grandfathered if you blew the setback.
And then piers, wharves, and bulkheads are included. I noticed my glasses were off, so I'm just gonna.
Don't draw attention to your own stuff.
I'm not, watch this, here my glasses are going back on, and then it's all good.
Go ahead.
Going back to my corner.
Now you're just, now you're just a member of the planning.
Yeah, just, yes, did. Digging down, digging deeper. Clarification.
What was your address?
Something like that's. Accessory use, accessory structures are piers, wharves, and bulkheads.
Yes. It ought to say accessory structures. It ought, that ought to be an accessory structure.
Yeah, so we'll have to be careful in shore land.
Yes.
I have a question on this, and I should've seen this.
That's why I included this definition.
No, I know, but I just wanted to.
Thanks.
I've seen this before, since this is not a new document, and it, it only struck me because it affects what I'm gonna be doing this winter. Accessory apartment.
And let's finish with that, accessory structures, then we'll go to, then I'm gonna waiver from the agenda and go into accessory apartments, which is not on the agenda, and it's just gonna be a quick discussion item, if that's okay with the board.
Accessory structure, suborn structure.
Okay.
So what you have in front of you is Article 3 definitions, it's the first page of the definition section. And there's this thing that we allow called accessory apartments, which, by the way, are not allowed in every zone, which is an interesting, you know, I hear a lot about housing affordability and more housing in town. What I'd like to do is be able to allow accessory apartments in all zones. That should be pretty easy to get through, I would think. Now, this is my, and we can talk about your question about accessory apartments. So I met with someone yesterday who's looking to do an accessory apartment, elderly gentleman, wants to do an accessory apartment, but he wants, he and his wife wanna live in the accessory apartment, because they're elderly, they wanna get into a smaller space, they got a big house, they would like to rent the house, but live in the accessory apartment. Under our current zoning ordinance, that's prohibited, because the way definition, the definition of accessory apartment is, says that the single, single-family dwelling, including any accessory building, shall contain no more than one accessory apartment, and be owner occupied for the entire time during which the accessory apartment is occupied. So it says that the owner has to live in the primary residence, and.
That's what I don't like. Does it say that?
It does.
Cause it says, "The single-family dwelling, including the accessory building, shall be owner occupied." So if you're in the accessory building, you can still be owner occupied.
Look.
The single-family dwelling is the initial, the main building.
Primary use.
Right. Yeah.
So start from the beginning, and a, second dwelling unit contained within a single-family detached dwelling, or an accessory building on the same lot as a single-family detached dwelling, for uses, complete independent living quarters, with provisions for living, sleeping, bathing, and cooking. The single-family dwelling.
Including, it's not a period, it's a comma.
But it's a subclause.
Shall contain no more than one accessory apartment, and be owner occupied for the entire time which the accessory apartment is occupied.
That's what I have issue with.
I have issue with it, too.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, I have a, a little carriage house.
Yeah.
It's independent, has a 450 square foot apartment above it.
Yeah.
I was thinking, maybe this winter, I had an invitation, I don't know, I was going to Japan for a month, if I was lucky enough to get a tenant in that apartment, well, I'm gone, that's very desirable to me.
It is.
They're gonna be able to look after my house if there's no heat, or whatever.
Yeah.
But I can't do it. I have to be in there, the entire month that I might wanna be gone.
It does say that, you're right.
That's, that's just, that's just absurd.
I would agree with you.
I'm not sure as I take it that way.
It says the entire time during.
That you have to be there.
Owner occupied doesn't necessarily mean you're on the premises.
It does say be owner occupied for the entire time during which the accessory apartment is occupied.
Right, but owner occupied, I mean, if I, if I have my house full of all my stuff, and I go to Florida for a month, I still have a residence in Maine, and it's still owner occupied. I mean, I would argue, I mean.
This question came up yesterday.
But it is a gray area.
And what is your primary, you know, what is, how, what's that length of time, in a year? You know, can I be away for six months, seven months, eight months, and still rent it out? And still have that be my primary residence?
You have to claim it as your, I mean, your residence is where you say it is, but I think it's more than, more than half, right? It's 50 plus, it's like 50% plus one day.
But even that state requirement doesn't talk about being occupied.
Right. I'm not arguing that it's a little unclear, I'm just saying that I wouldn't read that as saying that you have to stay in your house while you have.
That's what I said to the gentleman yesterday.
I mean, they don't, they don't read an absurd result into a badly written sentence. You're not, you're not under house arrest just because you're renting out the apartment.
Yeah.
But I do see that it could be cleared up.
It could be cleared up, and what I'd like to clear it up, and just require that the, that the owner occupy either one of them, doesn't matter. What does it matter really?
Right, but you still have the same issue that Richard would have possibly, if you're flipping it, you know, so.
Richard wants to then stay in the accessory.
An accessory can be like, big to little, little to big. Accessory doesn't necessarily mean that it's a subordinate.
I, I would argue that it does.
It does. If you look at accessory definitions, generally talk, generally have the words subordinate.
It just, the word.
Has the word subordinate in it.
The definition doesn't mean that.
It does have subordinate. Yeah, but I don't see any reason why we shouldn't all be living in our little tiny houses and renting out our big houses.
Richard, the definition of accessory structure says a subordinate structure.
It does.
What if that sentence were changed to just say, be owner occupied?
That was my, that was my hope.
Yeah. That makes sense.
That way, the owner can live in either one.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think, and I wasn't here.
And be away.
What's that?
And the owner can be away.
And be away, yeah.
Did you say primary residence, then, instead of owner occupied? I'm not sure if that, if that gets us into trickery.
I see where you guys are going, you're at the same place I am on this.
Well, the owner occupied is kind of an odd term, just because.
It's not a legal definition.
Yeah.
Let me look and see if we define our own, define owner occupied.
I think we have primary residence.
So I think primary residence probably covers you.
We define ownership, and not owner occupied.
Primary residence?
Yeah.
I think we do.
So, so basically what you're saying is, the owner can put his car in the garage and say, he occupies it.
Or it's his primary residence.
Maybe primary residence the way to go, because, I mean, yeah, you know, it's where you vote, it's where you register your cars.
Yeah.
You can't have an investment property in town and live in Colorado, and be renting out your property in town and the accessory structure on it.
Right.
Right?
Again, I wasn't here when we came up, when the town came up with this change, but I think they did it to allow, you know, people to start renting out some, you know, accessory apartments, but this provision, as long as that owner of the primary, primary owner is on the premises, it doesn't matter which one he's, he or she is in. Right?
I agree with that. You know, and this, I know you say this is a good idea to like, increase housing in town.
And density.
But I also see maybe the, what's gonna happen here is VRBOs. People are gonna say, well, I'm gonna put in a, an accessory apartment and VRBO it, which is not gonna do.
Which they already can do.
They're doing it already.
And they can do under current ordinance, I mean, you can already create an accessory apartment.
Right.
Already allowed. Right? So someone right now can, you can legally VRBO your house, or Airbnb your house, or an accessory apartment, if you limit it to one week, max, I mean, no more than.
No.
No less than.
No less.
No less than seven days.
Yeah.
So we're already allowing that, and we've already, we are holding some people, we So we're already allowing that, and we've already, we are holding some people, we have, we're aware of a couple that are less than that, and we've taken some enforcement action on those, and they've stopped. Where they were renting them by the night on Airbnb. Or I think one was two nights minimum, and we said, no, you can't do that, and they stopped.
So Mark, follow that thought through about how that might be negative to the town. To me, like, the, VB.
VRBO.
VRBO is just like an agency that puts me in a house. The important thing is that the house is housing me, you know, I'm contributing to town and buying groceries here and all that. So I, in a way, I think it's an asset more than a dark.
I guess as an accessory apartment, yes, you're right. But, but, you know, where we're going, I mean, people are just investing in town to do vacation rentals. They're just buying up houses, turning them into vacation rentals.
Are you seeing a lot of that?
Yes.
Really?
And I mean, it's just, it's, it's reducing neighborhoods to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Vacation rentals. It's, you know.
How can that be curtailed?
I mean, I will say, the Lodging Alliance and, you know, for a while, has talked about, asked the town to start looking at this and try to regulate them. Airbnbs and things like that. We did go to the select board with it. At the time, it was about a year ago, and I believe at the time the select board wasn't so interested in going down that road of regulating Airbnbs. I hear from both sides on this issue. It will likely come up when I talk to the select board in October that I'm hearing, because I've got a list going of, you know, things that people are talking about and things they want to change, and. You know, I, I have a lot of different opinions on Airbnbs, so I can go both ways on it. Regulate them or not regulate them. I mean, for me, the change of the neighborhood is, can be significant. We also already have change of neighborhoods where people have bought up properties on Chestnut and, you know, Bayview, and they just, it's their summer home, and they live away in the, in the winter. It's, it's dark in the, in the winter.
It seems like it's always been that way.
But there are also a lot of them are just.
It wasn't always like that. You used to have a stack of kids go up Chestnut Street.
Yeah, but I moved here in seventy-two and.
There's a stretch, stretch from the winter to the start.
There were whole stretches that were summer people.
Right.
Specifically the streets you mentioned, and a couple ancillary ones.
From my personal view, viewing of Cross Street and Central Street, and when it turned Central Street into one-way, what a difference it makes in that neighborhood, right? There are people walking in the streets. There are, I mean, it's, it's become like a real neighborhood. And that's just nice to see. And I would like to see more of downtown becoming neighborhoods, and, and I don't know how to do that.
Yeah.
That was a traffic issue that closed that street, right?
It was, yeah.
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 But you're partly attributing the improvement in the neighborliness of the street to the one-way traffic pattern that's been imposed.
Yeah. Yep. I think that's a good point.
Let me ask a question. One of the problems is I don't think you can stop people, I don't think you can stop people from buying a house and living here in the summer. You can't stop people from purchasing a house. But there are people that buy a house to Airbnb it. What if, and I've, I've had some friends that, they had a house they tried Airbnb, and then they rented it out long-term. And actually, it's been easier, better for them, simpler process. And trying to think about how we could encourage people to rent long-term. What if there were a couple ways to do it? What if we had reduced taxes for people that rented long-term? Or as opposed to Airbnb, or, it's been a while since I thought about this, or, you know, keep Airbnb the same for people that live in their homes and Airbnb it, but for people that are buying different houses, change the, give them a benefit for renting long-term instead of renting short-term.
Well, that, I understand exactly what you're saying, and that's, it would be complicated to do it that way, I think. Might be easier to call it a commercial property, commercial rental property.
Yeah, we're getting, we're going down a road.
I get asked that all the time. How can we stop the dark streets?
Down the road of a tax assessment a little bit, and, you know, I'd prefer Kerry to weigh in on some of this. I've had this conversation with Kerry, and as I understand, if, if I own a house and I spend a night there, that's enough for me to spend a night there, and I can Airbnb it, and it's not commercial.
What was that? That's part of that?
That if I, if I buy the house, I spend a night there, and then I Airbnb it the rest of the time. It's not a commercial property. But if I buy a house and I don't ever live there, then, then I believe assessing can look at as a commercial property.
This circles back to Mark's point. If this becomes, the language becomes primary residence, then you're dealing with fifty, you know, fifty-one percent of the time that this is your residence. So that would help you in a lot of ways to, it doesn't solve your VRBO and Airbnb issue, but it certainly has the properties have a presence in town at least fifty-one percent of the year. So in terms of community building and such, in theory, that's where you're at. Now, whether people live by those rules, again, you know, you're not an accountant, you're not a, you're not an enforcement officer.
I mean, I think it's really an issue of whether or not the town would like to regulate Airbnbs. I think that's the question, and that's, that's a question I think the select board has already talked about a year ago, and at the time, they didn't really wanna go down that road.
The way it was presented back then, okay, it was, it was the Bed and Breakfast Society that presented it, and it was all to regulate competition, all right? There was nothing stated about what's in the best interest of the community.
Well, what they presented to us is, they just wanted, they said, we'd like to know what's going on. We don't wanna legislate. All we wanna do is can there be registration and inspection for people that are renting out houses? Just so it's safe, and that way people will handle how much is happening. That was the only part that was presented, and I, I was for looking into that. I don't know where you got the impression that other people weren't, unless.
I got the impression that it was not all, all of the select board, because I figured I would have been directed to move forward on it.
Okay.
At that point.
We can discuss that, because I think it was, we, I, maybe we're waiting for more information.
I'll bring it up on my, kind of my.
Okay.
Workshop with you guys.
Because I think maybe it was, that was their presentation. I, I think I remember saying, well, let's hear some more about the specific ideas and stuff.
We'll say that they did, Lodging Alliance did hire, I forgot her name now, an attorney to look, to draft an ordinance for us, and they did that already. They have an ordinance drafted that we could look at. I prefer a more, and it's hard, because, you know, we're so home rule in this state. I prefer a more regional approach to these kinds of things, or a statewide approach to Airbnb, because in the end, if we start regulating, you know, Rockport's not, Lincolnville's not, Belfast isn't, then all of a sudden, what, what happens? You know, I mean, I think we need to bring people here, and I think, you know, people come to Camden for what Camden is, and if they have the ability, or if it's harder for them and more difficult for them to find places to stay, even for a weekend, they'll end up in Belfast, they'll end up in Rockport, they'll end up elsewhere. And that's just, I'd prefer a more regional approach to it, and I know that's hard to do in Maine, but that's my thought on that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, like, it seems to me like this occupancy, you know, the dark house thing we're talking about now, it starts way before select board, planning boards, any of those sort of meetings. It's, it's a product of what the town wants to be and where the town wants to go. And as I see it, Camden increasingly wants to be a tourist destination. It's their major industry. And now, just on the heels of a tourist season, I can go through town and there are literally thousands of people here, and I might recognize twenty of them. So it's the day sailors, it's the hotels, it's the shops, it's the carnivals every weekend, the festivals that are bringing people here. You bring them here, they're gonna have, they're gonna want a place to stay, and that's what leads to Airbnb. It doesn't start with a select board or legislation with the code officer. It's the genesis of the town.
Do you see it as negative, all the people that are coming to town?
That's a value judgment, you know, that I wouldn't, I wouldn't go out on. I just see it as a reality.
Well, I mean, I see so many people, I've met, I haven't been here that long, but I've met so many people that moved here after they came here to visit, right? I mean, they came here to visit, they spent a weekend, they spent a week, multiple years in a row, and they fell in love with this town. That's why they wanna come to this town.
But our population's not increasing.
And that actually may be an argument for regulating Airbnbs.
There are a lot of people that move here.
We have a lot of people dying.
Correct. I mean, I get that list. I see that list from the clerk's office every year, the number of people that passed away in town.
The whole region's not growing in population. It's not like where the.
But, but the point is, why, you know, why is that? Maybe, maybe it's because there's not enough here year-round. And it's like, we're focused on tourism and, 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 you know, catering to people from away, but how about taking care of us?
Or how about putting that same energy into changing the direction of the town where, where we might attract some business that's clean, you know, like a, you know, the offshoot of Jackson Labs, or at one time, like, New England College was gonna have a dentistry school here, you know, like, to attract businesses. That would be a very, very progressive thing to do, as opposed to having another carnival where you let rubber ducks go out in the harbor.
My guess is that there's.
You know, you find, you find them.
We found it breaking point.
You find them.
Down, the go-kart racing.
It needs Jesus. I mean, they.
It's a fundraiser for little children.
I know, but for God's sakes, make it something that's not gonna be there forever.
Non-plastic ducks, environmental ducks, biodied, rainballed ducks.
You can find non-plastic ducks in nature.
You can get those peeps, and then you could eat them afterwards.
Oh, God, they're delicious.
Great, they're like twinkies. Good for a hundred years.
So we're off track.
Well, yeah, we're way off track.
Primary residence, Mark, primary residence.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate, I, I get it, and a lot of people are talking about that. So it will be on my list of things to talk to the select board about Airbnb and VRBO, and see how we would like to.
It's just, you know, I just think it's important to like promote and understand that we need to really protect neighborhoods. You know, and it's just, I mean, everybody tries to like cut across through town and circumvent downtown. Well, you're driving on Route One. You're gonna be in traffic, you know, and so you cut through towns, and you cut through all the neighborhoods, and, and you wind up.
See how quaint it is in some of these neighborhoods and would long to be there someday.
No, they don't.
I do.
Really?
When I come, go on Cross Street.
Yeah.
You bet. I say what a sweet neighborhood this is, and just like you said, I see him walk in, I see the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Just throwing that out.
It seems like potentially, is it in conflict, this desire to, the benefit that Airbnb brings by allowing people to come to town and having, you know, an economical place to stay for a couple of days versus the damage that that potentially does because it's hollowing out neighborhoods, right? Which isn't so great for the people who live here, right? The residents as opposed to the business owners. So you can easily see the benefits of the business owners from having more people coming to town. Does that necessarily benefit those of us who live here and then have our neighbors, not have neighbors anymore, over keeping an eye on our house and getting the dog in when she gets out, right?
It only benefits the people, the business owners in the summertime, because if you have less people living here in the winter, it affects our year-round businesses, and that's what keeps the town viable. If we lose more of those, then we're in real trouble.
And summertime here is the low-hanging fruit. Everybody wants to come here in the summertime. But, so why do we need to promote that? Why do we need to like be aggressive about bringing people in in the summertime? They're gonna come. Who doesn't wanna be here in the summer? You know, it's just the off-seasons that, so we need to promote.
Yeah.
Valid points.
I hear we need some serious promotion.
They have a.
You've gotta be into the cold, so, yeah.
The bargain championship brings a lot of people in.
I'd be interested in knowing other places that have had this issue and how they've dealt with the idea of keeping.
It's all over the country, all over the world.
Everybody's struggling with this idea.
Yes, everyone all over. Rockland has regulated them. Rockland is regulating Airbnbs. So they have a tiered system, so it's easy to get a permit for an Airbnb if I'm owner-occupied and I live there. Standards are less, fees are less. I mean, that's one way to go, is go down that road where if it's owner-occupied and I'm renting an accessory apartment or a room in my house, that's one thing. I mean, from a life safety perspective, I, I, Airbnbs and VRBOs drive me crazy from a life safety perspective because, you know, I'm a, I'm a transient person when I'm on the road, and if I go to stay at a hotel, or, you know, I need to, they have to build those to a certain standard. There's exit lights, there's sprinkler systems, because they acknowledge that I'm transient, that I do not know anything about this building. I'm walking into it, I'm staying there for the night. Same goes for when I'm staying in a house. I mean, there, things will happen, and they will be bad at some point. Not here necessarily, but where an Airbnb, I mean, there was one down and further down the coast not too long ago, where there was a fatal. It was an Airbnb. Could that a person gotten out if, you know, there was sprinkler systems or exit signs and all that stuff that inns and hotels have to do?
And updated wiring.
And updated wiring.
Way of smoke alarms, yeah.
So Rockland is looking at things, those life safety features when they do their inspections. Now, you go down, it's a weird place to be. I'd much rather the state fire marshal deal with this as transient, as rooming houses, or as, because if you look at the life safety code, I would interpret it that they fall under rooming house, bed and breakfasts, and need to be built according to the life safety code, and they're not.
Do they have to pay lodging tax?
They're paying tax to, yeah, they're paying tax to the state of Maine. They settled, the state came to an agreement with Airbnb.
So what they do now.
Fifty-two million or something worth of income to Mainers last year.
Airbnb actually handles that. They collect the tax and pay it directly. And it used to be up until a year or two ago.
A couple of years ago, yeah.
That they would, the, the property owners would collect the tax and then order.
Sure they did, but so. So, I mean, there is, there is, or there are ordinances out there that are regulating Airbnbs, and they're tiered.
I didn't bring this up to regulate Airbnbs. I brought this up to like.
Community.
Community.
Neighborhoods are important.
Yeah.
There are things that ought to be brought up in a planning board.
Right.
And Mark, in terms of defining for this evening's discussion, what do you propose in terms of changing for a single-family dwelling? And in terms of Article Two or Section Two?
I mean, I don't think this really gets at what you were trying to get at, Mark. This, I mean, this section, I think you read this and it spiraled into another place, so.
But this would also help in terms, if the definition is such with the planning and zoning, that helps regulation. So if, again, it would be a stepping stone towards assisting in regulation if the language is properly set forth in our definitions. So, because right now it's too obtuse, or it's too, you know, Richard's objective.
Maybe, maybe what we need is just a definition for a vacation rental. Yeah, and then where are they allowed in town?
Not neighbor.
How's a vacation rental different?
Five acres?
Or an accessory apartment?
An acre more lots.
That'll have to be cleared.
Anyway, this is accessory apartments we're on, right?
Yes.
We are, and my whole, my goal on this, or my point was that the way it currently reads is that the primary, the property owner, owner-occupied, needs to live in the primary use structure and can't live in the accessory apartment. I'd like to just get rid of that to allow it to go either way.
We all have, I think.
And I like the primary residence.
Right, it's a primary residence and would be occupant of either unit, is what the language goes in there.
So be owner's, owner's primary residence.
Owner's primary residence, that's it.
Which again is illegal by your taxes. I mean, there's a legal definition. Whether, you know, how you enforce that's a whole different issue, but at least in writing by definition, it's primary residence. And then for Richard, it's the issue of you can occupy either of the units. And then you're in pretty good stead. And then you're in pretty good stead to start to work from that base.
I think so. And then we can have more discussions on Airbnbs and.
Lengthy discussions again.
It's a big one.
It is a big one.
Because it is, it's really dark.
Well, but then look at the next accessory apartment shall, number two, be occupied by a person or household for whom an apartment is the primary residence.
So we're gonna have to work on that.
I mean, that eliminates vacation rentals right there.
It does.
Mm-hmm.
That's what that says, yep.
And that's the whole point, though, right? If it's their primary residence, then it's not used for the.
It says the accessory.
The accessory apartment would be a primary residence also.
Yeah, it's not a vacation rental.
It's not a vacation rental.
They're talking about like, so.
But that helps.
Richard wants to rent out his house long-term, or the apartment.
Yeah, long-term rentals.
Long-term, but he's not gonna be home, that, it's that person that he's renting it to, it's their primary residence, he's not renting it out as a VRBO or something.
Yeah, so we're talking about long-term rentals.
So it's not even touching on the other stuff.
Are there people that are renting access, things that have been permitted as accessory apartments to people that are not, you know, their primary residents?
Absolutely, absolutely.
But at least you have it in writing to.
Correct.
What we're looking for. So again, it gives.
And I don't know how you deal with that, I mean, there's, you know, things that happen all the time that.
Case by case when it comes up.
Case by case when it comes up.
Somebody reports that.
I said, there's one couple that we've dealt with already this year.
What, what's the issue again?
You deal with on yesterday?
Can't short-term rent out your accessory apartment.
By definition.
By definition of accessory apartment, it needs to be the.
But you can short-term rent out your house if you're staying in your accessory apartment.
No, because it has to be owner occupied.
No, you live in your, you live in your accessory apartment.
The new language would be either or.
All right, yeah.
Either unit.
That's where the money's at, you don't make money in the accessory apartment, in the house.
Move the whole family into the accessory apartment.
Big, big.
For where I live, right now, there's a house that they, Airbnb it for like five years, and they're renting that house out, it was like three grand a week, you know?
Oh, I mean, yeah, yeah, and.
And if I was that owner, yeah, I'm not, I'm not here anymore, I'm in the military, I'm gone, making three grand a week during the season.
And then they go to a campsite.
Good stuff, that's true.
And that's how I justified my boat.
I like that.
I rented my house, stay on the boat, you know?
You might be sleeping in a tent, you better be careful.
All right, time for a bigger boat.
So I'll, I'll, I'll work on this accessory apartment piece.
Is that 600 square feet arbitrary, should it be discussed?
It's kind of the way it's always been.
It's always been that.
Okay, so that makes it right?
I'm not saying that makes it right.
You can't do much with 600 feet, right?
Perfectly candid, yeah, it's always been that way, so it's.
I mean, I wasn't thinking about going, changing that, I mean, we can look at that, but.
That's a good size of space.
I don't see any push to move that.
That's not unreasonable.
Oh, God, mine's 450.
Right, yeah.
Well, we're here under the code, we don't need to change it.
It's okay with me, you know?
If you don't mind.
It happens when you become an alternate.
Did we adequately cover that? We did.
I think so.
Yeah, it went, it went in the places I didn't anticipate, but I should have.
We have more than adequately covered that. Is there any real business on the agenda?
Any real business on the agenda to start?
Really quick.
Before we go down, Jeremy, you didn't want to address accessory use at all, that wasn't part of.
Nope.
Yeah, I'm wondering if my daughter's cold yet.
All right, so next you have BTR and B1 in front of you, hopefully, you see those? Now, this gets back to, I think there's a couple of angles here, but we talked about this prior, about the dwelling unit. If you look at, on the development standards on 8-65, minimum lot area per dwelling unit is 1,500 square feet for the BTR, okay? If you look at B1 and BTR, the permitted uses, the commercial uses, the professional service uses, water-dependent uses, industrial uses, accessory activities, special exceptions. And then you look at the development standards, they're pretty much exactly the same. There's a few uses that are allowed in BTR that aren't allowed in B1 and vice versa. But what's not the same, and the standards are almost exactly the same, and if you look at the map, I mean, I don't have the zoning map right in front of you, but you know where BTR is, right? That's the Knox Mill complex going up, kind of where the Bagel Cafe is, and then keep going up a little bit, that's BTR. And then the B1 is the downtown core. I kind of see them almost very similar, and I think most people would assume they're in the same zone. Again, the development standards are the same, there's no maximum, you can, you can cover your lot completely, ground coverage, building coverage, there's no maximum on either zone. Heights are the same, 50 feet. Generally, except on the, except in the B1 where it says east side of Maine and Bayview is 24 feet, this is on 8-34 on the back of that page. So they're pretty much exactly the same zoning district, except.
Get rid of the business transitional zone.
That was a thought I had, and make it B1.
It's just the same, make it B1.
I want to spend a little.
Transitional, what's transitional about it?
Correct, that's how I feel.
It's a, and it's a, it's, that term has always confused me.
It's a little odd to me, what I'd like to do before I do that is go through the uses that are allowed and really kind of focus on those a little bit, make sure we don't.
Other things, just like you did on the Bayview Street in B1, you just referenced, you know, if there's.
Transitional River is the mill.
Primarily.
In that quarter right down.
So in reading through this, this, this was kind of created for redevelopment of that property. So, I mean, that's my take on it.
That's how I, my take is too.
Now it's been redeveloped.
Yep.
So.
Time to delete it.
Yeah, I would say so.
That's my thought, original thought, but I didn't really focus a whole lot yet on the uses, and to see if we got any existing uses out there that would be, you know, become non-conforming, I just have to double, I'd like to look at every property specifically in the BTR to make sure we're not going to negatively impact the BTR zone property.
Where's it go up to that Bella Rosa or whatever that.
Yeah.
Kodak Building, or, yeah.
Yeah, right there. But, so that, I'm glad to hear that, that that's where you guys are, what you're thinking about. Again, I'd like to look at the uses, but my primary piece here was the dwelling units. The 1,500 square feet, one zone, the BTR says you gotta have 1,500 square feet per dwelling unit for lot size. The B1 zone has no, no lot size requirement at all for lot, for dwelling units, and I'd like the 1,500 to go away to become no minimum lot size in the BTR.
Can you anticipate any resistance to that for any reason?
Do I anticipate any?
Well.
I don't know.
What are, what are some of the dwelling units in the BTR? Free Street, or?
So all the condos?
That's what I was wondering, so.
There's no problem with the 1,500 there, they don't need it.
When they developed the Knox Mill into the retirement housing, that 1,500 per dwelling unit.
As you may recall, we have an agreement to, for parking lots, to purchase parking lots from the owner of Knox Mill. One of the benefits of doing this too would.
They would still be in compliance.
They would still be in compliance. Right now, if we purchase these, they got a problem because of the lot size requirement.
But they wouldn't increase, they wouldn't pack more elderly people in these rooms.
Not necessarily, but, you know, one of the, like, one of the units, one of the buildings is, one of the buildings is no longer just senior housing, only senior apartments, it's families. I know a couple of families that live in one of those. And if they meet lot size or, or space requirements for the life safety code and building code for a dwelling unit, does it really matter for us in a built-up environment where we've got almost lot line to lot line of buildings?
We have those checks in place.
Allow the lot coverage to be maxed out 100%.
Yeah, I mean, there's no setback, so.
There's no setbacks, and we allowed you to cover the whole lot with building, you know, yes, you have to have some parking, remember, we tweaked the parking a little bit, but we lessen that requirement, which I was glad we did, but right now, we still have this dwelling unit requirement that I'd like to lessen. And it may afford people more opportunity to add more units into some buildings, and is that bad?
Top of the buildings, that floor.
There's also a question of reimbursement in some of the assisted living, right? I mean, the Medicaid will reimburse for double occupancy rooms and not single occupancy rooms.
We heard a little bit of that one last time.
But that was some of the requests for being able to have double occupancy, which, again, makes sense if you want to be able.
When we change the definition of concrete housing.
To stay in a place if the family money runs out and the state kicks in, so you don't have to move, just because the zoning ordinance doesn't allow you then to.
Jeremy, do you know the genesis or the history of those 1,500? Does anybody know where that came from?
I assume that came back when we were doing the, when BTR came to be, when they were trying to redevelop the Knox Mill. I, I don't know where it, where that came from, I can do a little digging. The way our code is, it's not easy in the way our municipal code is not easy to track and find how and why things happen, it's not. One of my tasks is to actually kind of codify all of our codes into one, we're supposed to have a Camden Code.
The master.
We don't have that, we have ordinances all over the place, and we call them the Camden Code, they're actually supposed to be in a, in a code, and that's one of my.
Curious, when I first came, I worked at the Kodak New Imaging Center, which is now all that mill, and, you know, they moved a whole bunch of us here. And the fear was, and Kodak was talking about this, was building a whole bunch of apartments over there, you know, and they were all going to be studio apartments, and they were going to move thousands of people into that facility. It never happened, so I was wondering if that was part of.
It's probably, likely that.
Where this all came from, is that, you know, that kind of fear.
Same person who wrote 600 square feet for an accessory apartment.
So.
But you're 450, Richard, so, you know, you're skating over this one.
But that's an example of exactly the kind of year-round business that Richard was saying our town could use, right, have that many single people coming in and living right above their place of work.
New York, LA, that was the whole idea, that this was, you know, it was kind of the pre-Charley Colley MBNA, it was that first.
It was all back then.
So if we determine all the uses are compatible and decide to just eliminate transitional biz, or river, transitional river.
Rename it.
And rename it.
B1.
And, and, yeah.
Then it all goes away, and it's not as, it would just be a zone change.
Simple.
It would be a zone change.
Would, would we have to vote on the map change?
Yeah, we have to go through that process for a map change. I mean, I think that's probably the better way to go.
I like that change. Yeah, you gotta change the.
And I've gone through, you know, most of it, but there's.
I mean, and you look at it, especially the residential uses, they're exactly the same.
Yes.
You know, you can't, you still can't put the residential on the first floor, you know, you still can't do that.
You know, it's.
It just makes sense to me.
Transitional River is at a, it's got parking garages.
Which I'd like to add to B1.
Would?
Sure, why not?
Then you'd have to look at all of B1 and determine whether it's appropriate.
See what we wrote for us.
I mean, do we not think at some point in town, a parking garage may be appropriate?
Been thinking that for years. Just make Sunday.
It's appropriate.
It's gonna happen.
Underground.
Hortsmiths.
Hortsmiths, Hanover, New Hampshire, I mean, you go to Hanover, New Hampshire, and you, you're like, where do all these people park, and they're all in garages underneath buildings.
Or above, above grade.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I find in. Needs to happen in order to a parking garage, right? I mean, there needs to be the land, and, you know.
A lot of money, a lot more than like above ground, yeah.
But I think there's some, you know, prime locations for some, a couple of parking garages in town that would not be very offensive looking, would not be big, that you could actually enter from two levels.
Behind raiding?
Ground level.
Or Walgreens now?
Right there, even the, even the.
Water station lot.
Even the fire station lot.
Fire station lot, that's tossed about.
You can enter down below, you can enter first level, second level, and then you don't have to do the.
But then, something like that, I mean, what's the business model for building a parking garage?
There are developers, when I was in Bangor, there were developers looking for, that's what they wanted to do.
But even somewhere like Camden, which is a lot smaller than Bangor, isn't it?
It is, but there's a lot of traffic and a need for parking, it would be a money maker.
It would be a year-round boom.
Be a money maker.
It would make money each year.
Yeah, sure.
It just.
I'm not just surprised nobody's done it yet.
My concern there is losing the quaintness of the town. You know, that would be my only concern.
Well, anything like that. We got surface parking, right, in a handful of locations that is surface parking.
Yeah, I know.
That's not quaint.
It's not that quaint, and you can actually make buildings look pretty quaint, you can make parking garages appear not to be a parking garage. I mean, you look at the fire station lot. You got elevated parking up, up high already, you know, you could dig into that bank a little bit, put more surface down on the bottom, off of Washington Street, and then a second level up top, up a little higher up on the street.
It almost goes back to what we were talking about earlier, about quaintness, like, what do we want the town to be?
I mean, and just for everyone out there that may be listening, we only got on this conversation because Mark talked about the parking garage not allowed in the B1. Not that we're proposing a parking garage for Camden.
It doesn't mean on both, also, also in the B1, we don't have outdoor boat storage, that's the other one.
I don't believe there's any outdoor.
The market would take care of that.
What's that?
The market would take care of that.
I don't believe there's any outdoor boat storage in BTR right now. Can't think of any, so, you know, that's what I mean by looking at some uses that are allowed currently, see if we have them out there in the, in, in the field right now, and then, and then, you know, see if we can add them to it or.
And then you have food service on this one versus restaurants on this one, but that's also.
Auction sales?
Very odd, some of our uses that we, do we define auction sales? I don't think so.
Nope.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense, though.
Makes sense to look at B1, expanding B1 as opposed to changing BTR, great, that's awesome, I like that thought.
Draft it up, tie it with a bow.
Keep it simple.
Good job, Jeremy.
I'm actually not ordering.
My daughter's actually ordering, right.
All right.
Probably longer if you're 20.
Maybe for next, uh, next, next meeting, we are going to have a meeting, and likely there will be two, um, two pre-app meetings at the same, on the same day, I know.
Two weeks from now.
Two weeks from now, likely two pre-app meetings.
Could you give us an idea of what those pre-apps are? I heard one might be called the head of the harbor mixed use.
Right, so Lyman Morris at the, what do they call that, the.
Red Shed.
The Red Shed, like their outboard maintenance building, I think they call it, or Mary Red Shed. They went to the zoning board of appeals for approval to demolish that and build new. So, since this is new construction, they gotta come to you guys, to us, so there'll be a pre-app meeting likely on September 17th for that. And then the middle school project.
Pardon?
Middle school project. Remember the MET building staying?
Yeah.
Now?
Yeah.
Right, so the last time you approved the project over there, the MET was going away, and now the MET's staying, so we have to.
An amendment to the site plan.
Amendment to that plan.
So that's just like housekeeping.
For the most part, housekeeping. But, you know, they, when you did it before, you looked at parking for the use, right, and now we've got the MET, now we've got office space and all that stuff, that's going to end up in there, so. That, that's what, well, those are the two pre-apps. Likely, we're, we're looking at the Riverwalk Trail, right, which comes along the Guns Cook and then comes up by, well, it's kind of ending right now near where the, before you get to wastewater treatment. The plan has always been to take that, continue that along the wastewater treatment lot, and then along the village district, well, setbacks for trails and. And then along the village district, well, setbacks for trails in the shoreline zone on the, on the school lot, as well as the other lots further down or upriver, don't allow, don't facilitate that Riverwalk Trail. And I tried to work with the legislature last year and our local folks, legislators, to try to get amendment to the state shoreline zoning rules. That did not, did not go well.
Thank you for trying.
I tried. I actually tried to, and, and, I mean, I get some of the legislators' concerns. They were, they didn't want this to apply everywhere in the state of Maine, you know, they didn't want it to apply, apply in the middle of very pristine drought waters, you know, where that are regulated, you know, they didn't want a sep, a trail twenty-five feet from, from high water. And I get it. Maine Audubon was very much opposed to, to it. I get that. So then I kind of rethought the whole idea, and then I came up with an amendment to only applied in service center communities, right? And only if it connected a general development district to another general development district that were within a mile of each other. I mean, it was like a no-brainer to me. It only applied in major urban areas in the state, Camden's one of those. And it was connecting a general development, built-up area to another built-up area within a mile.
Are you creating, I mean, you're re-nitting the urban fabric as opposed to destroying the natural environment, right? They're two fundamentally different conditions you're dealing with.
But that has been proposed to them.
Oh, I did.
What happened?
That was shut down?
Bird people said no.
SOL.
They're all about the birds.
Really high in the air, right?
So that was shut down. I thought that was a no-brainer. Service center community.
But was it the same thing, just an unwillingness to?
Unwillingness. They thought there'd be just too many negative, potential negative impacts to the resources. And I tried to remind them that in these general development districts already, I mean, there's for the most part, zero setback, right? You already are allowed. And we were, we were actually saying we were gonna meet a twenty-five-foot setback. Right? So in these general development districts, you're allowed like the BTR, B1, you can go to zero foot setback from high water because it's built-up environment already. I tried. So, the Riverwalk Trail cannot go where it was always planned to go. So the plan is to actually hook the Riverwalk up to Lion's Lane and then connect into the school property. Well, one of the drives is gonna go away, one of the, um, the drive that takes you from the parking lot over to the bus barns, that, that drive is going away. In their new plan, it's gonna be a walkway, a sidewalk, so our plan is to just kind of bring up the trail up to Lion's Lane. I know it's not the most attractive trail. And then you'll get to Knowlton Street, and then you'll get to Washington Street. No, but then you can keep going out Washington Street to the Tannery one and walk down the Tannery Riverwalk.
And then hop back on.
And then hop back on Washington Street. We're trying. I mean, I'm, I'm trying on this one, but.
Hey, I like that urban connector idea.
I know, but didn't happen, so.
Can we ever hop on the other side of the river where the sewer treatment plant is?
Actually, the same over there. Still got the setback. There is a lot of wetland over on that stretch. We're working on it. I know Jeff Scott and the Pathways Committee are trying hard. But without that amendment on the legislative level, shoreline zoning, and that's the thing, shoreline zoning applies statewide, so it was a hard.
Precedent over everything, doesn't it?
When I said main service center, you know, they were like, what's that? What are those? It was very interesting. And I quoted old state planning office documents and growth management stuff that the state had put together and directed the legislature to do, legislature to do certain things and.
And who are you talking to?
The legislators.
The whole entire legislature.
Yeah, the Energy and Natural Resources Committee.
And they really couldn't.
Certain ones got it and were very supportive, others were not. So.
Good try.
So just do what everybody else does.
Just build it.
Keep going back till they say yes.
Oh, I, I thought you meant build it. That's what everyone does, D E P rules.
What's the status of that Rossin Avenue Bridge?
Oh, good question.
The endless obstruction, yeah.
Audra and I met with, with DOT the other day, and the select board hasn't been briefed on this either, so. Yep. Yeah, so, I gotta maybe be careful here.
I'll just, I'll just suggest that if the state doesn't want it to become a bridge, you know, to be active, they don't allow a Riverwalk to be in a sensible place, it's what they want the citizens of this state to be, like just totally immobile?
Well, DOT and D E P don't work together very, you know, they're not the same agency, so.
I mean, that, that little bridge there could be a real asset to a trail.
Yeah. That bridge will likely not be there in the next couple of years.
Just take it away completely?
Yes, it is a hazard, and I went out there, we talked, I mean, when we met with them the other day, we talked, expressed the need for a pedestrian connection there. I moved that, I was, Audra and I's fundamental.
Vehicle connection, that bridge.
The cost on doing a vehicle connection, and the, so DOT has a formula that they use. You know, who's being served by that bridge, and there's this whole formula. And they are applying this formula to, I think, like three hundred bridges in the state right now, and.
It doesn't cut it.
It does not cut it to meet their level of, their service level to actually rebuild a bridge there. So, um, they would likely do, probably, hopefully, fingers crossed, split fifty-fifty with us to put a pedestrian bridge in there.
To revise that to be a pedestrian bridge?
That bridge cannot be revised. That bridge will go away.
It's pedestrian.
That's, that's, the abutments are not okay. And it's very likely that all pedestrian access, right, will, all pedestrian access over that bridge will, will go away within the next week, would be my guess.
Really? Is that bad?
It's that bad.
No kidding?
Yeah. And I know people in the neighborhood.
Doing that are just as bad of what it does to a neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, and DOT understands that. I mean, their, their planner, their chief, chief planner for the state was here, chief of planning, and then their local mid-coast planner was, met with us, and, I mean, they get it. The problem is, is it's just in such bad condition, they don't, their engineers don't want even two people on the bridge together.
Really?
Yeah. And so when we walked out there, when I, I walked it with, with the guys from DOT, and there were people the whole time we were there, I mean, we were there for fifteen minutes, and we must have seen, I don't know, fifteen, twenty people walk in. And so it was good for them to see, you know, that this community really needs that connection and values that connection.
The most important parts of it is if without that bridge, kids walk into school.
That, yeah, that, I. That's, that was the, that was the point I made to them.
Thomas Street and then on North Side.
Yeah, that was the point I made to them, and they get it. So they're willing, it sounds like they're willing to split fifty-fifty with us, a pedestrian bridge.
Do a rope bridge, I have a lot of rope.
But.
I know a way we could save the state some money, simplify Route One North.
One rope.
Spending a lot of money on what they're gonna do there.
I, I, yeah, it's out of my, out of my.
So, and there's another example, Rossin Ave, okay, that created a neighborhood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That close into the bridge. And those people are happy.
They're happy?
Yes.
Yes. It's true.
They won't be happy if there's no pedestrian.
I know, and it's, I mean, it's unfortunate, but I, I think what's gonna end up happening, it's gonna be one day DOT's gonna be out there and they're gonna fence it off. Like fence it, fence it so that people cannot access it. It will be ugly, but unfortunately, you know, safety is their, is their thing right now, and when they, I think when they saw the amount of traffic it was getting and the number of people that were on it at the time, they were like, oof. So, I just got word of that this morning, that they're gonna be out soon to fence it off.
Were that many people? Pedestrian bridge would be great there.
It's a central part of town, so let's shut it down.
When he said multiple people, I, I, it was, you know, three of us were standing on it, you know?
Jump up and down, make them feel better.
But they get it. I mean, they, they, they saw the pedestrians, they saw, they understand that this is the shortcut to school, having them go up, you know, on, with no sidewalks is not a, a good, good thing. And, and I'm actually sending them an aerial that shows some trails through the woods that connect over to Rossin, where kids take that trail down over to Sewer Reasement, they do. So it's just not that neighborhood, it's the neighborhood up behind it.
Like Cobb Hill?
Yeah, that's what I told them. So I'm sending them some aerial photos showing where some trails are that people use to get there. So, I mean, they're, they're listening, they're listening far more than they listened a couple of years ago.
Good.
Yeah, it's, all the agencies seem to be a little different than they were a couple of years ago.
A little turnover.
Funny that.
All right, so we'll see you.
All the work you're doing, Jeremy.
Awesome. Thank you, Bruce.